I call this meeting of the Millersville Borough Council to order as of 7:01 PM. As a reminder, this meeting is being livestreamed. I ask you all now, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Be seated. All right. At this time, I'm going to make a motion to approve the council meeting minutes for the meeting held on June 10th, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Very good. Any discussion required on those minutes? Corrections? Anything? Very well. All those in favor of approving those minutes then, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Very good. Motion carries. We'll move on from there to public comment. We will be listening or we will be hearing any comments, requests, or concerns from member of the public related to items on the agenda or other matters. You will have five minutes to speak. We ask that you either come to the microphone or request that the microphone be brought to you. And if you do give an address, please give your name and a general address for the record. Would anybody at this time like to address council? Very well. Moving on. It just says employee service recognitions. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you very much.
Take it away.
One of the favorite things I like to do twice a year is recognize basically the backbone of what goes on in this borough because without these folks, half the stuff would not get done in this borough. And I just like to take a few minutes and recognize some of the people. Some of them are here, some of them worked all day, and I don't blame them for not coming in because of the heat they had to work in today. But a couple of folks, Nicole Busham has been here with us one year with the sewer department. Emma Dene.
Emma Dene.
Good to be here with us for one year also. We appreciate what you do for us every single day.
Thank you so much.
Officer Patrick Dyberson, who's been with us one year. Remember, our production long we sent to the Academy.
Yeah, very good.
Luke Pennington, who's doing our finances, and unfortunately he can't be there with us. You'll see who gets this. Thank you. And another one of our chief partner, Michael Rossi, who's been with us one year. I'm sure he gets that. And one of our secretaries, the police department, Jennifer Soder, who's been with us for one year. She'll see if she gets that tomorrow. And another officer just walked in, Tracy Starries.
Don't get comfortable.
Excellent timing. And another one of our secretaries, Adrian, who works with Jennifer, the police department. And Adrian's been with us for five years, but this next gentleman who also works for our sewer plant, Frank Barley, has been with us for 30 years.
Wow.
And we have a lot of, a lot of folks who have a lot of knowledge in our borough. We have two of our employees that are here for 37 years, over 37 years already.
Wow.
So those two, plus Mr. Barley, there's a lot of tenure. So all of our employees added up, there's like 345 years' worth of service to our borough. So we want to thank every single one of them for what they do every day.
Absolutely.
Thank you for the opportunity to recognize these folks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. As I mentioned during our last council meeting, just a few hours before that meeting, we received an email that our fellow council member Darlene Eager would be stepping aside. We didn't have nearly enough time to advertise that on the agenda, so we want to cover that this evening. And we'll start by, I'll start by making a motion to approve the resignation of Darlene Eager on council. Do I have a second?
Second.
Very good. And before we go to the vote, I don't think there's a whole lot that needs to be said other than a mention of appreciation for Ms. Eager and all of her years of service to the borough. We do appreciate what she has done for us and are sorry to see her go as a colleague. With that being said, all those in favor of accepting the resignation of Darlene Eager as a council member, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. What this means is that we now have a vacancy on council, and we will be accepting letters of interest from members of the public, from residents of Millersville Borough who are qualified to become council members, at least 18 years of age, one year of residency. Anybody who is interested in filling that vacancy, please do let us know either by emailing that letter of interest to our borough inbox, that'll get to me, or by delivering a physical copy here at the desk at our borough offices. Just as a quick word, this is something that's going to be voted on as council as a whole, but this is a position that ideally should be voted on by the, the members of our community. That's not possible for us, so it does need to come down to an appointment. Our residents did vote for a Republican to fill that seat, so at least in my decision making, I will be giving preference to registered Republicans for that seat. I will not be looking for anybody who is currently on the ballot to fill that seat come November for the Janu- for the term starting in January.
If I may, I totally disagree with you, and I will be giving my vote to whomever I feel will do the best job for the borough.
Completely understandable. And there will be plenty of discussion to be had. Those letters, we have 30 days to make that decision. Do try to get those in as soon as possible, though, so that we have the full slate of people for us to consider.
Will that be on the website?
Do you want to make that? Yeah.
I went on the website today, and I didn't see the announcement of the vacancies on the boards and commissions. At least if it's on there, it wasn't very prominent. And I thought we were going to accentuate that because there are quite a few vacancies.
We did, we added it, it's now as a quick link on the homepage that it never goes away. It's under volunteer opportunities. So it's now there because before, every time we'd repost it, it would end up in the news and alerts, and then if there was new news and alerts, it would, it would move down. So now it's always on the homepage under quick.
Is there any way we could highlight that? I mean, there's some important committees with vacancies, zoning hearing board, planning commission.
We can keep finding more ways. We constantly are posting it on Facebook and, and on the website. Again, we added this as a way that we're always to live on the homepage, but we will continue to do everything we can to push.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other comments having to do with that vacancy? Very well. Seeing none, we will move on to our reports of boards and commissions, starting with Blue Rock Regional Fire Commission.
Do I hear the answer? I'm with Blue Rock Regional Fire District. I talked to Rebecca earlier, this week or last week, about our capital campaign. So Blue Rock has been in existence for the last 14 years in Manor Township and in Millersville Borough as your board and emergency management. A couple of years ago, we started to look at our long-range plan, and because of our long-range plan, we started to look at some of our buildings and our needs. We have four buildings currently, which is what happened, what we had when we started, three in the township and the one here in the borough. At that point, there was some talk that the federal government might have some grants available for the buildings. So we started looking at our buildings, gave assessed values for our buildings, started looking at volume of calls, volumes of volunteers, et cetera. And at the same point, some of you may know, or maybe not, one of our buildings is actually owned by Lancaster County Solid Waste Management Association, so we, we lease that. And, and talks with them, they have plans over the course of the next decade or so to take that building back. They need that building as they look at the landfill down there. So as we started looking at the master plan more, we, we thought it would be in our best interests economically and from a health, safety, and life safety standpoint, to figure out about a new station and combine the two stations that we have along the river. So we have, we have a station in Hyville, and we have a station in Washington Borough. Those stations together only run a little over 100 calls a year, so when you look at that and you start to look at the expenses of facilities and maintaining facilities and whatnot, we decided it was time to look at a new building. So when we first started this plan, we were thinking somewhere around $5 to $6 million. If you look at the Lancaster Township station, that some of you may be familiar with driving in at Millersville Pike, they built that station for $5.2 million, but they weren't able to finish it. It's actually not a finished station. So at that point, we started to look at probably $7 million. We started to look at land. As most of you know, a lot of the land out in that area is preserved, so we were very limited in the land that, that we could look at. We found a piece of land, if you're familiar with the Washington Borough Park, that's right at the end of 999, that land that we typically use for our tomato festival is owned by LASSA, and LASSA has agreed to sell us a portion of that land at, at cost. So we got an assessment, we got an appraisal. If you've been out that way lately, we've been doing a lot of work on the land, we got to do an archaeological study, storm study, et cetera, et cetera. One of the things that you're all, again, probably pretty familiar with is, we figure we need about four and a half acres, which is really all we do need, except for the storm water management, doubled that to nine acres. So, so we needed nine acres basically because of storm water management runoff and whatnot. The, the, the big story is, it's a good piece of land, we're getting it for a fair price, the, the market value. And what we're going to do is consolidate the two stations with the idea that we're looking at the next 25 to 50 years. You know, my goal has always been to maintain the volunteers in Manor Township and Millersville Borough, but at the same point, I'm a realist and think, you know, 25 years from now, we have no idea what's, what's going to be out there. So looking at that station along the river, we get a lot of calls in the river, as you're well familiar, they are, and they, they come in to support the borough. At this point, the estimate for everything, and I'm talking about engineering, buying the land, building the building, is about $10 million. So what we probably could have built pre-COVID for what, $3 or $4 million? Unfortunately, since COVID, if you've tried to buy anything, you realize the prices, everything went up. Having said that, we have a capital campaign starting. You might have seen, we had an ad in the advertiser two weeks ago, which was supposed to be two weeks from now. We got a little ahead of ourselves there. The advertiser went a month early. But the idea is, we have a committee together, and we're starting a capital campaign to raise money. We're looking at a lot of grants, we're looking at a lot of funding from a lot of resources. The idea, hopefully, to raise enough money that as far as our regular budget goes, we're okay. As you all know, we get our operating budget, our capital budget, from the borough and the township. We're currently sitting on about $1.9 million in capital budget. We've done pretty well with our finances over the last 14 years. We're pretty, pretty conservative with our spending, so we were able to put money in the bank. But the hope is that we can come up with this $10 million in addition to what we have, because obviously you don't want to deplete everything we have, because there's vehicles and apparatus that we have to maintain and replace about every five years, we have to replace a vehicle. Having said all that, you'll see, starting July 12th, we're going to actually kick it off. For those of you familiar with, with our tomato festival that we have in Washington Borough every July, so July 12th is night one, that's going to be the big kickoff. We're going to have a media blitz, and we're going to start official kickoff for our campaign on July 12th to raise money for the station. The hope is that we can start building next spring, and the timeframe is about a year to build a building like that. I will say that $10 million, you're probably sitting there with some sticker shock, it is, you don't get much. It is, it is, it is what we need and probably nothing more. I mean, there's no frills, there's no extras. It's, again, if you kind of look at Lancaster Township's building, it'll kind of look somewhat like that. Obviously, we need it to be a good facility, so, you know, for maintenance and to have the vehicles and whatnot. But the other, the other benefit is, we're taking two stations, consolidating into one, so you save money ultimately in, you know, insurance, utilities, et cetera, et cetera. Plus, it's always, when you build a new station, you also have a good boost in volunteers. And that's an area that's heavily traveled, so we're hoping that we help with that. So I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of this before you hear our kickoff next, next month and three weeks or so, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can answer.
Sure, Duane. Can you, can you talk a little bit more specifically about the additional funding avenues that you're exploring? I know you had mentioned some grants. What, what are you looking at?
So obviously, we, we do the fundraising for the tomato festival, which isn't going to get us $10 million.
It's a lot of tomatoes.
I mean, it wouldn't give us $10 million, so it'd probably take about 300 years. But the other thing is, you know, we have reached out to our state representatives. I've, I've talked to Representative Smith, Wade, Wade L., sorry about that. I've also talked to
Scott Martin.
Miller, Mensler, and Senator Martin. So we're looking to the state for some money. They have capital budget money every year, so we have applied there for money. That is just an initial process right now. In fact, I just had to get that in last Friday to, to move that forward. So that's one of the areas we're looking. And then we're looking at, at all the major foundations out there. So we've, you know, there's, there's a list of foundations that you can get money from. One of those foundations is high, as you may have read recently in the paper, High Steel, or not High Steel, but High Properties has, has purchased the Armstrong property. So we're, you know, going after people locally here that have an investment in our community that will help us. So pretty much everywhere and anywhere, we have a list, we have a list of all businesses in the borough and the township that, you know, we'll be asking also. We put a committee together that's going to go out and literally talk with, with some vendors. There's a lot of philanth- philanth- I can't speak.
Comanthr.
Out there, and we're, we're looking at all avenues and any avenues that we can. The, the goal would be to not have to touch our regular budgetary money, because that money, for these 14 years, has basically kept us afloat while providing us with our vehicles. You know, we just bought the rescue that's here in the borough. That vehicle cost us $1 million. And again, if you go back five years ago, it was probably $500,000. But, so we're hoping that we can raise the $10 million completely without, you know, coming to the municipalities, because obviously the money that we get from the municipalities helps support us on a day-in, day-out basis and keep us afloat.
Duane, how much money have you collected so far?
Without trying, we've collected about $150,000. And that's just kind of a, we did kind of a soft kickoff last year. We put an ad in the advertisers to see what would happen, and we, we pulled in about $150,000, which isn't bad considering we haven't really, you know, started the big campaign yet.
Sure. Other questions? Very well.
I'm taking donations tonight if any guys checkbook. And I will say this, too. If you give me $5 million, I will put your name on the building. Not takers. All right. I tried. I did my best. Thank you very much.
$5 million. Yeah, yeah. $5 million, you have your name on the bill.
Very well. From there, we will move on to discussion and adoption of the final Freedom Memorial Park Master Plan. Do we have anybody speaking on behalf of that plan?
I'll speak on behalf of the, the plan. We've talked about this a couple of times during council meetings, but we're finally at the end with our park master plan. Our park committee has been working on this for a little over a year at this point on this master plan. And the, the last step that we were waiting on before we brought it for final approval was getting any additional comments from the PA Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. They did not have any additional comments or edits that they would recommend changing in the master plan, which is good. And they are one of the organizations, of course, that we submitted a, a grant application for as well as to DCED. So we're cautiously optimistic about both of those grants. But the, the master plan has not changed then, because we did not receive any additional comments from DC, DCNR. The master plan has not changed from the last time we brought it to council. It is, at this point, in its final form, and the adoption of this will help plan how, how, how we use the park, how we think about changing the park over the next, hopefully, 10 to 15 years. And, but we're hoping that, of course, the money that we would get from grant funding would help to make many of the changes that are in the master plan. So we're looking for adoption this evening.
Yep. Very good. Final questions before we move on? In that case, I'll make a motion to adopt the Freedom Memorial Park Master Plan as presented. Do I have a second? Give that one to Mike. Any discussion? Very good. All those in favor of the adoption, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? And the motion carries. We'll now move on to council committee items for action, starting with Finance Advisory Committee. And the only thing that I have is a motion to accept the May financial report and authorize staff to satisfy the ordinary and routine obligations incurred by the borough for this month. That is out of committee, so no second required. Does anybody have any questions about the May financial report? Then we'll move right along. All those in favor of accepting the May financial report, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to Personnel Advisory Committee.
There was a discussion and approval to move the employee 357B retirement plans from Bright House Financial to Equitable Financial at the June 10th council meeting. Therefore, this does not need a second, as it is out of committee. Is there any discussion?
Just a quick correction, that's a 457B retirement plan. Is that what you were going to say?
No, I was just going to say that our, our representative from, from Creative, which
is the group that helps us manage our 457, Patrick is here to answer any questions that council might have.
Oh, great. I don't personally have any, but.
I will call for a council vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. That's all I have. Sorry, we had no questions. It's good, huh?
I think you want a pen, enjoy the pen.
And, and Patrick was here all day, meeting with, with staff, and his associate Stephen were here all day, meeting with staff to talk about it with them individually.
So it wasn't just to talk to us? It's going to feel bad.
No, no. He, and Stephen have been here all, all day.
Very good. All right. And then from there, we'll pivot to public welfare and public works then.
Okay. At our committee meeting, at the last council meeting, we had a discussion and approval of use of the application for handicap parking spots on borough streets. Everyone had their backup material at that time, including a sample application. It was approved, and it is out of committee, so I will make a motion to approve the use of the application for handicap parking spaces as provided. No second is necessary. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion is abstentions? The motion is carried.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. I just have one thing. I had the great opportunity of joining some graduates at Millersville University today. This was a Certified Public Managers course that they have taken over the past year, and each one of the eight that graduated gave a small presentation. And two of the folks that were there actually are relatively close. We have Public Works Director from Lancaster Township. He took his course and, and graduated, and the Assistant Township Supervisor, or Assistant Township Manager for East Temfield was there. And the presentations were phenomenal, and a lot of research was put into it, but I was fortunate enough to be there when, for that graduation ceremony. So I will now turn it over to the, the chief to talk about the numbers for the past month.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll give you the short rundown for the police department activities for the month of May. We answered 327 calls for service, which included 17 ordinance complaints. One involved animals, five were disorderly conduct, seven were noise, two were open alcohol, and two were all others, which resulted in six ordinance citations. We made 14 criminal arrests, 12 of those were adult, two were juvenile. We had five, five Part I offenses and cleared four for a 90% clearance. We handled 37 Part II offenses and cleared 36 of those for a 97% clearance. We had a total number of traffic violations for the month, that's 74. 17 were speeding, 15 were other, eight vehicle accidents, issued 14 parking tickets, and patrolled just over 2,800 miles. For serious cases that end up with the detective and/or myself, we did pick up an additional fraud case and endangering welfare of children, and that's it.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Mayor, thank you as well. We have no report from Penn Manor, but we will move over now to the Millersville University report. Ms. Norman?
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having me here today. First, I want to start by saying, I want to thank council member Darlene Eager for serving on Borough Council. She was one of the select few that was a part of the small panel that interviewed and appointed me. I don't know whether she was in favor of me or not. That wasn't disclosed. But nevertheless, I just want to thank her for taking the time to interview me and hear me out. So now, I'm going to actually go to my report. Current enrollment is running even or slightly ahead of last fall. Summer camps on campus are going well, which also means more people are on campus this summer than usual. Counseling Psychology, a website that provides resources for aspiring counselors and psychologists, ranked Millersville University Social Work Online Degree Completion Program as number two in its 2025 Best Online Bachelors in Social Work Program listing. They base this ranking on flexibility, accreditation, affordability, and graduation rates. So that's pretty exciting. And on a more fun side, recent graduate Kayla Mitchell, who graduated with a degree in Communications and the Concentration in Public Relations, was back on the show Master Chef. First, a contestant at 11 years old on Master Chef Junior. She is competing again, but now on Master Chef Duos with a fellow contestant from her season on Master Chef Junior. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's good. Very good.
All right. Rebecca, take it away.
Sure. Okay. The first item, just before I get to the other things, just make sure to check all of your emails. We did send out cybersecurity training for everyone, including our council members. So do make sure to, to take care of that within the next three weeks. I would appreciate it. If you have any questions about it, let me know. I'm happy to walk anybody through it. The next thing is the summer paving schedule. I just wanted to make sure that everybody received it in their mailbox and that we were announcing it at council meeting. We will be paving three roads next week. There will be another rave alert coming out about that at the end of this week, but we will be paving, milling and paving Cottage Ave, East Cottage Ave, Kerr Avenue, and Circle. The milling will happen at the beginning of the next week. Hopefully, finishing most of it on Monday might carry a little bit into Tuesday, and then through the rest of the week will be the paving. We have posted on our website, again, it will be another rave alert. We already did one rave alert, next rave alert will be the end of this week. We just want to make sure residents know, roads will be closed, depending on the time of day, for those who live on those roads, that we'll be able to get in For those who live on those roads, that will be able to get into their driveways depending on the time of day. Um, but especially when paving is happening, obviously, you'll need to be avoiding those roads, even if you live on them. So, we will be asking folks to make sure that they're parking, um, on other roads if they need to be getting in and out. Um, if you have any issues or questions, especially during, during those days, please, please call the office. Um, we'll be able to, to direct you or help you if you're having a parking issue or need to get into your home or, or things like that. Please do let us know. Um, but we're excited to get this paving, uh, paving underway. But remember, just because a road is paved doesn't mean we should suddenly, like, speed on said very nice smooth road. We do have that happen sometimes. People get excited, new road, they're like, oh, let's go super fast now. Now, speed on the nice new paved roads. Right, Chief?
Right.
Um, uh, any questions about that? Paving, very exciting. Uh, next item, uh, is everyone's favorite, the budget. We're ready to start next year's budget schedule. Feels like we're still, you know, working on figuring out this one. Um, uh, but no, we are ready to start twenty-twenty-six. Uh, I provided to you all in the backup in, in your mailbox is a copy of the budget process. Um, with the hope of us kicking off in terms of the council part of it, um, looking at, uh, starting to have those, uh, discussions in September, um, we'll be spending the summer putting together the department budgets, um, and going from there. Um, but that, that, uh, tentative schedule has been provided to you all. If you have any questions, certainly let me know. Um, but get excited. Budget this year. Thank you. I appreciate the enthusiasm. Um, the last item I have is a request that we received from the Millersville Turkey Trot Program. They sent in a request, um, to get council's approval for their twenty-twenty-five Millersville Turkey Trot, which will happen on Thanksgiving morning, November twenty-seventh of this year. Um, in the backup was the map, um, and the email with the details about the program. They, um, expect no changes this year, um, and have already been working with the various groups in terms of making sure that, um, roads would be handled that morning. Um, so, uh, we're looking for approval for that event.
I'll make a motion then, should I do? A motion to approve the twenty-twenty-five Millersville Turkey Trot on November twenty-seventh. Is there any discussion? All those, oh, I need a second, please.
Yeah.
Mike, okay.
Okay, Mike. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is carried.
And that's all I have for my report this evening.
Very good. Uh, for my report, you all received, pardon me, you all received a draft ordinance regarding, uh, council committee and, uh, approval for advertising. Uh, we've talked about this, uh, certainly those individuals who were, uh, or are head of committees. We've had discussions about this, uh, the idea that we, uh, moved to somewhat of a more, uh, diffuse and flexible, uh, committee structure. In order to do so, we did need to amend, uh, section nine-three of our ordinances, and a copy of that was both in your mailboxes and in the backup materials for this meeting. Um, I will make the motion to authorize the advertising of the draft ordinance regarding coun- we have to advertise it first, but I will make the motion to authorize the advertising of the draft ordinance regarding council committees. Do I have a second?
No, I have questions.
Sure. Once I get a second, uh, we'll go to discussion and then we'll go to the vote.
One second.
There you go. Adam, Mike. Uh, now then, yeah, your question, Linda.
Okay. Um, I am concerned, because I haven't been given any, you've not spoken to me about it, so I'm not clear on that. And so, I would like to have a little bit of discussion tonight on how we would do that so that we would have good coverage.
Absolutely. So, the idea is, oh...
Before we even get to that...
Mm-hmm.
I object strongly to messing yet again, within two years, with the community, committee structure. And I'd like to remind everyone in council, there will be a brand-new council come January twenty-twenty-six. Uh, many of us will not be on there. Uh, Joe may not be the president. So, I don't see the need to change things yet again, this close to the end of our council, which is a two-year council. The next four people who come in here, replacing me, Linda, Phyllis, possibly Darlene, I think it should be up to them to have the input, not the current leadership. So, I strongly object to this.
And I agree with Mary Ann.
Understood.
And so, tonight, when we made that, we made the second to advertise it, I'm not comfortable advertising it.
Right. And that's what the vote's going to be, is whether or not we advertise. Just having the second puts the motion on the table for us to have the discussion. The idea behind this is that we currently don't have any mechanism in place to change committee structures outside of our reorganization. Uh, we spoke with Joselle. This would be an amendment to, that's to allow council by resolution to change the committee structure, um, moving forward. The idea is that we have gotten rid of our committee assigned, or we got rid of the committee meetings. The once-a-month finance meets on a, on an off night, and members of the public have to come to that meeting, as well as the Borough Council meetings. We did away with that while still maintaining that committee structure. Uh, the idea here is that we would have, instead of a, a committee with a broad umbrella, for example, Public Works and Public Welfare, uh, that we would have, uh, more discreet, uh, areas of responsibility for specific individuals. So, one individual might be responsible for reporting to council as a whole on public welfare, or public welfare, uh, finance, public safety, et cetera. And then, council as a whole can have that discussion on whether or not that's going to be voted on in the meeting following. This would just, uh, in my mind, open up the committee meetings for the whole of council to participate prior to those, uh, resolutions, ordinances, what have you, uh, going on the voting agenda for the second meeting of each month. It's certainly nothing I'm trying to force on anyone. It's a way that I see of helping to open up and streamline how committee meetings go now. Uh, but if this is something that we would prefer to wait on until the new, uh, the next Borough Council meet, I, that's perfectly fine as well.
I would request to table this until then.
A second?
And I got a second on tabling it here.
Sure, but we have to resolve...
We have a motion now on the table, so we have to...
Right. So, uh, if there's no other discussions, I can call this vote. Seeing no other discussion?
I did just want to note that, um, that, uh, per the president's request, I did put in your mailbox, um, the two draft agendas that we had put together of what, what the, what the meetings would look like. The ordinance itself, um, the way it's written, only, only just removes the fact that it's a requirement to set committees. Council can still set committees. That, it just provides that flexibility. It doesn't dissolve committees. Um, that was just a clarification I wanted to make sure of.
And I have a clarification, I want a clarification there. I always thought that council had to set committees. And we had an ordinance that set the original committees, and we changed that then to combine six committees into three. So, what is it that this does differently?
The only thing that this, that this ordinance really changes is that at the reorganization meeting, the council would need to set committees. This says the count that, that council could set committees by resolution at any point during the year and can dissolve them at any point of the year, or can set up a committee on...
Got it.
Committees, whatever they want.
Got it. Well, I stand by my original objection. I don't see any need to complicate things for the next six months.
Uh, Rebecca, I have a question here. On these two agendas that you gave us, a sample agenda of what it would look like, should we do this? Um, as I look at the one, uh, that what would be the second meeting of the month, then we have reports of boards and commissions, so all of those people would be giving reports at that meeting?
That would just be the set aside time for any of those groups that did meet and did have a report for council, just like we do now where, you know, Blue Rock has the opportunity to give the report.
Right. So, that's not something that has to be done?
No, no.
Okay.
We don't do that the way now.
And I, can I assume then that Joe, or the president, I should say, whoever that may be, would be the person responsible for assigning who's going to do what? And that everyone on council then would be assigned some aspect of the three committees?
If you're asking me, the, the ordinance does not state that. The ordinance would, and the ordinance now doesn't provide for that. Um, so, and that's not something that we would write into an ordinance. That's a council determination.
I, um, it says... Just in practice over the past thirty years, that the council president appoints committees. The council president is one of seven.
Yeah, it does say here in this...
Only powers he has that you do not have and I do not have is he ultimately is responsible for the agenda, and he sets committees. Other than that, he's just like the rest of us.
Correct.
Yep. Other discussion? Very well. The motion is, on the table is to authorize the advertising of the draft ordinance regarding council committees. Uh, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Abstentions?
Can we do a roll call for that, just because I'm not sure if we got everybody there?
Sure thing.
Uh, Councilmember Coughold?
To go through.
Aye.
Councilmember Eager's not here. Councilmember Gerber?
Nay.
Councilmember Guyerson?
Nay.
Councilmember Belil?
Nay.
Councilmember Kurlovich?
Kurlovich.
Yeah, I know. I'm, I'm not really sure.
We have to say something.
Well, I'll go along with it.
Is that a yai?
Yai.
And Council President Lane?
Uh, for the sake of keeping this simple, I will go ahead and vote against.
That is two in favor and four against. Motion fails.
Yeah, motion fails. And we'll move on to our second public comment. So, uh, at this time, council will hear comments, requests, or concerns from members of the public related to items on the agenda or other matters. You all have five minutes to speak. We do ask that you either come to the microphone or ask the microphone be brought to you. Uh, and then, once again, please do give your name and address for the record if you do choose to address council. Would anybody at this time like to address council?
Listen, on our agenda, this is a regular meeting. Meeting, meeting.
My name's Zitfrance. I live at fifty-five North Duke Street, and I see a bunch of e-scooters running through.
We cannot hear you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just, uh, speak up a little bit for us, sorry.
Let me start over? Okay, my name's Zitfrance. I live at fifty-five North Duke Street, and I see a lot of e-scooters around. Uh, I'm concerned because e-scooters are not really legal in United, uh, Pennsylvania. They're supposed to be the same as motorcycles with, uh, proper, uh, registration, titling, insurance, and, uh, different things. My biggest concern is, like, on Prince Street, I'm pulling out of Prince Street and they're coming the wrong way down from the hill, pretty fast. So, I'm more concerned about someone getting hurt and that officers realize that they can stop them anytime and question them, uh, if they have registration, insurance, and, uh, because under Pennsylvania law, from what I understand, same as a motorcycle. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. France. Anybody else to address council? Not sure I'm supposed to call for that. It's, we have mismatching agendas on whether we got a second public comment.
Well, if it makes you feel any better, you can technically offer a public comment, whatever the heck you want.
(laughing).
Get out, go down.
All right.